Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 18th. This is our regularly scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Campbell is out today having a surgical procedure, so I'll be chairing the meeting today in his absence. Looking for approval of the agenda. If you see in your notes, we do have an agenda addition, the discussion and direction on the Clay County mask mandate and social distancing in response to the CDC recommendations and Governor Walz's executive order.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross and a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Is there any other further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Citizens, do we hear? Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Steve, did anyone reach out to you?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Also, just for the public's note, you have the ability to come to these meetings to speak during this time, but you also have the opportunity to reach out to our incoming administrator if you'd rather do it that way. Our next item would be the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the bill to managers.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Gross, the second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item, next item would be the approval of minutes from May 4th, 2021. They've been included in your packet.
Move for approval.
Second, motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve as presented, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Item two would be our update on COVID-19. The Public Health Director, Kathy McKay. And Jamie?
Morning.
Good morning. All right. We handed out the weekly data, and as you can see, the changes aren't significant in the cumulative cases. We have 92 deaths in Clay County cumulatively, and that's the same as it was last week. The active cases have continued to drop, which is great. They were 129 last week, and now we're at 81. So it's really great to see the continued decline of active cases. The median age remains the same. Hospitalizations, we have cumulative of 339 in Clay County and 31,398. And the report from the epidemiologists throughout the state of Minnesota, as those numbers continue to decline, hospitalizations and those that are in ICU. Also, on the North Dakota side with our healthcare systems, they're seeing declines as well. Our 14-day case rate per 10,000 is 33.44, so that has declined as well as we would expect. It was 40.60 last week. So we're really seeing the benefit of the people that have availed themselves to the vaccinations and those that continue to adhere to all of the public health prevention measures. Our Clay County cases per week, we just have the graph that also just shows the peak and then the decline that we've been experiencing lately. The active cases per age group, and it is the 10 to 14, so that's a little bit of a change where we're seeing more of the younger age groups that are experiencing the COVID. And we do have authorization, as you may all have noted in the reports, that the authorization for the Pfizer vaccine from the 12- to 15-year-olds is out. And Jamie will talk more about those vaccinations and how we're addressing that need. And then the next cases that are the highest by age group is the 35 to 39, sorry. And the cumulative cases by age have been the 20 to 24, so that's been consistent as well. We talked about on the next graph, the hospitalizations per week, which are declining, and the Clay County deaths, which has remained the same. And then the statewide hospitalizations per week, we're seeing declines across the state, which is great.
Great. On those numbers? Jamie?
Okay. So looking at the data, I will let you know that we've talked a lot about whether the numbers are accurate in the data that we share each week. And we spent quite a bit of time last week working with the Minnesota Department of Health, and we were actually able to get information on people that were informing us that they were vaccinated on the North Dakota side and they were not in the mixed system. So the good news is that the state is working on that now. So again, looking at the data, for Clay County, we have people with at least one dose of vaccine at 40.5% and people who have completed the series at 35.1%. And I'm not going to go through all of the details of that, but flipping it over to the state side, state with at least one dose of vaccine at 61.6%, and then people with a completed vaccine series of 53.1%. And again, all along, we felt like we were at the state level in Clay County, and you know, we just needed to collect some actual data to present to the state to get them to work on that. So we're pleased that that is on their priority list now. And then just, again, we brought the ZIP code information that tells you the percentage of individuals that have been vaccinated by ZIP code and the population, and that population still is 16 and over, not, they haven't included the 12 and over in that yet. So that's still 16 and over that remain to be vaccinated in the ZIP codes. And then, looking at Clay County public health vaccinations, things continue to be very slow for us. Last week, we administered 234 doses, and 70% of that is second doses. So we're seeing each week that we're focusing primarily on second doses based on need and interest in vaccinating. And then on the bottom of this graph, we also have been sharing the percentages on the North Dakota side for Cass County and fully vaccinated, and those with one vaccine dose, and then North Dakota as well, as a comparison to Minnesota and Clay County. And then the last is the cumulative cases by ZIP code that we've been sharing for data to, just looking at, and again, from the very beginning, the doses by ZIP code. And then I'll just kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing this week. As I mentioned last week, well, and I didn't say the total, I guess, I apologize. So as of the end of last week, Clay County Public Health has administered 14,275 doses of vaccine. And this, looking at this week, we are going to have two clinics, aside from going into some of the homes of the homebound people that we've been vaccinating. We're doing some second doses and some first doses, and then also doing some follow-up with second doses of Pfizer for 16, 17-year-olds in the schools this week. But we'll have a clinic on Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00, and we have 30 doses of Pfizer for second doses. And then we have 30 doses of Johnson on Wednesday as well, from 3:00 to 6:00. And then on Thursday, we have a clinic from 1:30 to 3:30. We have 100 doses of Moderna, first and second available, and then 100 doses of Johnson and Johnson. And then what we've been doing for the last week is working with the schools and making plans to vaccinate those kids that are 12 and over. And so the school nurses are helping us to push that information out to parents. So what we will be doing is getting consent from parents, as well as having them do the registration on the link and online. And so some of the schools, two of our schools are wrapped up already, but they're talking about their summer school programs and their summer activities, meals that are delivered on a daily basis. So they've been communicating with us on opportunities of how we can serve them. So that will be our focus for next week, for sure.
Commissioner Gross?
What is the situation as far as people getting vaccinated twice? I see there's incentives sometimes for getting vaccinated. Okay, well, is it $5 incentive or a donut or whatever? Okay. You want another donut, so you get vaccinated. Is there a problem with getting vaccinated twice?
Well, they're encouraging people to come in who have not been vaccinated.
Well, I agree with that, but if you're going to give me a donut, then I can come in again. So, I mean, that's the only problem with being vaccinated twice.
It's not the completion of the series you're getting twice. It's the second dose of the two-dose. Right. Yeah. Is that what your question?
No, I'm just asking, if they took Johnson and Johnson and took that twice, is there a problem with that? Would that inflict some sort of harm to a person?
If they took the one-dose vaccine, Johnson and Johnson, and actually came in and got a second dose, that's a one-dose vaccine, Pfizer and Moderna, the two-dose. The only thing we're seeing with hesitancy about getting the second dose to complete their series is if they had a pretty significant reaction to the first dose. Some people are hesitant then for the second dose, so we're seeing that. And sometimes there's a, some people are getting a physician order if they had a pretty severe, like say, more of an anaphylactic reaction. So sometimes their physicians will say, don't get the second dose, so they're following what they're prescribed.
I was just wondering, I mean, I read where, I think, I don't know where the state it was, that they give students an incentive for a $1 million dollar drawing or something like that.
That's Indiana, I think.
Indiana.
Indiana, there's only.
Indiana was having for, I mean, there's some incentive to go in there a couple times to get a shot, isn't there? And I was just thinking, is that a harm to give incentives here for vaccines?
No, Commissioner Gross, we have not offered incentives, and that's not been the typical case across Minnesota, nor has Minnesota Department of Health recommended incentives. If this board would like to offer some incentives, that's totally up to the board's decision, but Public Health has not offered any incentive.
Well, I know what happened, you know, but I just wanted, is there a harm in getting it twice? I guess that's my question. If I had the dose, I don't know, back in whenever it was, you know, if I go get it again, would that affect my health?
I think what we've talked about is at some point, there will have to be a booster, which is the same as your influenza booster. And so, yes, it's not advised, because I got the Johnson and Johnson, and it would not be advised for me to go get the second Johnson and Johnson right now, nor probably someone who has completed their two-dose series. At some point this fall or further down the line, it will be helpful and recommended to get a booster. And I think that's maybe what you're hearing.
Well, I'm just concerned about people. I'm very concerned, say, I'm very concerned about my health. I had my shot, and I just want to make sure, you know, I really don't get it. I'm only 95% safe now with that vaccination. I want to be 100% sure, so I'm going to go get the shot again. How long in between? Should you wait, or if I go three months apart, is that okay?
No, Commissioner Gross, we check in every facility that provides vaccines. We verify that you haven't received the vaccine. If you come back in, you've already received it, we cannot give you another dose, nor can any medical facility or pharmacy. So we're verifying that you've already received a dose. There has not been some firm information about when that next dose, some call it the booster dose, if there's an annual booster that's required, just like the flu vaccine. We haven't gotten that information yet. That hasn't been verified. So if you come in and you've already had the vaccine, you cannot get it.
So you've got it on record somewhere, that I got the vaccination?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Maybe one thing, Commissioner Mojo, I wanted to mention, as Jamie talked about, Minnesota Department of Health trying to catch up with getting some of the data on our vaccinations, because we're on the North Dakota border, we know it's not accurate. We also pushed out a press release and information to the media. For those that were vaccinated in North Dakota pharmacies or with the Fargo VA, those are the two entities, we cannot get the vaccination information. It's not in our immunization registry. So we pushed that out for people to contact us, and we'll enter it ourselves into the Minnesota registries, so we can get a little bit better accurate data. And I know the first day, I think we had 90 people that responded that are letting us know that they received the vaccine in North Dakota, and then we can put that into our registry. So we're trying to also help locally, as well as the state, to get our data a bit more accurate.
Kathy, I think that was a really good segue to the point I want to talk about next. Over the last year, your department has done a phenomenal job with re-envisioning how we get information out to folks. You've done a really good job on social media and dealing with the news outlets to make sure that the people are getting the information that they need to as fast as possible. Having you come every week has really been helpful, and it's important for us as decision-makers to see the trends, to see where there might be gaps, to see how we can help you. And I know that it's a lot to come to the county board every single week with the data that you do, but I'm wondering now, because sometimes it's been changing so fast, by the time it gets to us, it's maybe a week old to make decisions on things, and I think we've done a good job of addressing the needs where there are. Wondering if it's necessary for you to come to this board every week to give an update, if maybe it would be more appropriate of your staff time and prep time to come every other week? I think you'll continue to update social media and get information out as it's ever changing. Not sure what this board's wishes are. I would be open to discussion on that, but I would certainly maybe propose that option.
Well, I would definitely agree with you on that. In fact, I tried to do that a couple of months ago. I think every other week would be sufficient. I mean, if something comes up in a week, get on the agenda, you know? There's no big problem getting on the agenda. So I think every other week would be sufficient right now as we move forward.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Agreed. I think it's a better use of staff time to have them focus on their other efforts and their, I mean, this is just one piece of their job. They have this whole other spectrum of things that they're dealing with as well. So yes, get on the agenda. If there's something important, bi-weekly seems like a good fit.
Commissioner Ebinger?
I'd agree with that as well.
Okay. Well, certainly you've heard from us. I know that you'll continue to update as information comes out to get the information to the public, and we'll do our best to share that. But I think until there, hopefully, we don't see a spike, but from now on, maybe do every other week, and we can go from there.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to vote on that piece, or is that just a recommendation?
No.
No? Okay. Perfect. Kathy, I think you'll be here for the next, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. I would like to take our agenda addition right now, if that's okay. As all of you are aware, Thursday afternoon, the governor changed some direction on some recommendations, and I know that we've had staff members and members of the public reaching out to us to see how would we adapt to what was recommended. The PICC committee did meet this morning. Because Commissioner Campbell is out today, I did sit in on that with Commissioner Gross so that we could discuss our safely return-to-work policy. So Steve, if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you put it very well, I think that with the changes of recommendation of the CDC, MDH, and ultimately Governor Walz's executive order 2021-23, we put a packet of information this morning before you, and we appreciate your flexibility in allowing us to have this discussion. I think it's an important one. And so, if you recall, back in May of last year, we were required through executive order to bring forward a safety plan to address returning to work. And in part of that safety plan, both in May and July of last year, we established policies on masks and also on social distancing that now would not be conducive with the new executive orders and recommendations. And so we wanted to bring this before this board this morning to have a discussion on what, and to provide some discussion and direction on how you would like to move forward. As I mentioned, you do have a packet in front of you that includes the executive order that lays out the expectations of 2123. You also have our respiratory etiquette portion of our safely return-to-work program that lays out the expectations of that. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned this morning, we did also have a PICC meeting, and as we've done with our safely return-to-work process and many other issues, that PICC committee has met and brought oftentimes a proposal for this board to consider. And so we were able to meet this morning as a PICC committee, and the document that we would propose to have language for on our webpage and potential news release is there. But again, the point we'd like to do first would be to have a discussion from a commissioner's standpoint.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I think one of the things we need to be aware of is that the vaccine is here, and unfortunately, we can't question people as to their status of being vaccinated, but we can make it contingent upon them being vaccinated that they not wear a mask. We don't make the inquiry about vaccination. We're going to assume, we're going to do this on the honor system, that if we have an employee that comes in and they're not wearing a mask, it's because it's at least two weeks after their last vaccine. You know, having somebody wear a mask during their entire eight hours is a hardship, and I understand that, and where it can be avoided, it should be. We're also going to have to trust the public to be fair about it. I've been to several retail establishments since the governor's change on this has come out, and the CDC's change on this has come out. And it's an honor system. But that's the reality of it. We need to give it to them. And looking at what the PICC committee recommends, I think that's reflected in this, and I think it's a good directive. Thank you.
I'll agree along with you. What we proposed, I'm just concerned about people who are very hesitant about coming back, and they probably have the shot or vaccination, but they're hesitant sitting next to someone who didn't have the shot and not wearing a mask. I think that's something we're going to have to learn how to deal, we're going to have to come up positively with a policy or what. I don't know how we're going to handle that. But I mean, as for now, I think we're going to have to go like Commissioner Ebinger said, go on the honor system and go forward with that and work with that, you know, and hope that our employees do go by the honor system.
Commissioner Kaylee?
I would also hope that some of our staff that are feeling a little hesitant or on the fence still, this would be an encouragement for them to finally go in and make that appointment and get the shot. And it is a personal decision. It is not for everyone. You know, we know that there are medical reasons not to get the shot, but for those that can and just haven't made the time yet, I would hope that they would, so.
Thank you for your comments. I think the PICC committee really wanted to align with, we've gone with the CDC recommendations all along. It's been a priority for us to make sure that we were following the message that we were hearing from CDC. Doing this in this capacity, we'll continue to do that. I think that it's important to note on this statement that because of different requirements, we are still going to require masks in the correctional facility, the juvenile detention center in Clay County Detox until we're directed otherwise. That's important to note. And then because this building is also occupied by the courts, the courts have yet to make a statement on that, and so the Supreme Court order governing and continuing of the Minnesota judicial branch will be referred to regarding masking and social distancing in the courthouse. So I think that's an important piece, too.
I would like to make a motion, we move ahead with this proposed language that we provided from the PICC committee, but I would like you to read that if possible.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to accept the proposed language from PICC.
I'll second that.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Just a comment quick before I read this. I think it's important to note that our community has done a fantastic job of keeping our community safe and healthy throughout this time. It's a personal preference at this point to decide what your medical directives will be, but also what your practice will be. But I think going forward, no matter what, this board appreciates the continued effort of individuals to keep the community healthy.
Madam Chair, if I may, before you read the statement, while he's not here today, Commissioner Campbell did want to pass along that he was supportive of following the CDC and MDH recommendations with the contingency of ensuring that employees, that we support wearing masks, employees and citizens, if they haven't received the shot.
Thank you. The cares that committee met for about six months with funds that we were allotted, and we worked really hard to address safe work environments and safety of the community that comes in, the customers that come in, I think we did a really good job of that. And I'm hopeful that the actions that we took will help to reduce any fears that folks will have going forward. Effective May 18th, 2021, following the guidance of the CDC and Governor Walz's executive order 21-23, masks and social distancing will not be required in Clay County buildings or property. However, people who are not fully vaccinated two weeks since their final vaccine dose are strongly recommended to wear face coverings indoor and practice social distancing. The county will also continue to support the public and staff that choose to wear a mask while in county buildings and vehicles. Fully vaccinated people should also continue to wear a mask in our Clay County Correctional Facility, the West Central Juvenile Detention Center, and Clay County Detox until other rights directed by CDC and Minnesota Department of Health. The state of Minnesota Supreme Court order governing the continuing of the Minnesota judicial branch should be referred to regarding masking and social distancing within the Clay County courthouse. Any further comments? If not, we do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Steve, can you make sure staff changes the signage appropriately?
We will do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think the last sentence of that is this Clay courthouse, it should be Clay County courthouse.
Our third item would be the request to approve the sale of 188-acre county-owned property in Riverton Township, our planning director, Matt Jacobson. That is in Attachment B of your packet. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So this is maybe a little bit of deja vu, because I was before you, I think last fall asking for this, requesting the approval of sale of this property. And we ended up pulling it from auction just to do some additional due diligence. Myself and County Attorney Melton did some work and just looked into it more and found that there aren't any restrictions on this property that would prevent us from going forward and trying to sell it. So just to give you a little bit of background, this is in Riverton Township. It used to be, it's the western half roughly of our future landfill site. The reason why we're looking at moving this property is that it's predominantly native prairie and wetlands, and so it's not really conducive to landfill, or a landfill site. So we had surveyed and split that parcel from the future landfill site. So essentially, what we were looking to do was a live auction, as well as accept sealed bids for the property. Received significant interest in this property for the past six months, so a number of individuals and entities inquiring about it, and so I kind of have a list of people to contact. I would also like to notice this at least twice. That's what we did the last time, we noticed it in our county paper, and I believe in the forum as well, at least twice, before we actually hold the auction. So looking at maybe doing that in the next couple of months. Any questions for me at all?
No. Continue.
No, I'm just glad to see that we are finally moving ahead of it. No, I'm just glad to see that we are finally moving ahead of it, getting rid of some of our county-owned land and, and getting it back on the tax rolls.
Excellent. Yeah, one thing I'll say about this is that the proceeds from this would go to the solid waste enterprise fund. I had put a minimum bid of 177,770 dollars, just looking, and that was basically based on the, the assessed value of rural vacant land plus wetlands. The, looking at the O and E report from the Clay County Abstract Company, they have a market value of, on here of 188,000 dollars. So maybe want to consider changing that minimum bid to reflect the, the market value of the property as opposed to the assessed value.
If so, we don't get the minimum bid, then we, then it's just not for sale then? Or we just take it off the market if we don't get minimum bid?
Well, you wouldn't be able to bid, period, if you wanted too high.
No.
I appreciate the fact that you brought that or included that. I think going back, your comment on the enterprise fund, the property was originally purchased with solid waste funds, so that's why it would reflect that way. Do you have a recommendation for what the minimum bid would be? We, we didn't talk about that at the county-owned property meeting per se, but I personally think having a minimum around the 150,000 would seem an appropriate level, but would certainly be open to any further comments.
Yeah, that 177,77 is, would be the, the assessed value of the property. And it's certainly, if you would like to go lower, it's certainly your prerogatives to do so, so.
It is 188 acres. That is a significant chunk of land.
Yeah. One of the, the issues with this piece of land is, is the zoning is fairly restrictive. You're not going to go in and develop it commercially. Even residential development would be tricky. And, and the, and the reason why the zoning is so restrictive is because the land is not really developable. Like I wouldn't want to go in. It'd be hard to put, get access to it to even build something like a house just because of the soils and how wet it is. That being said, if you're looking for a place to go.
Build a T stand. It would be a good place to build.
Yeah. Some big bucks in there, yeah.
What are the board's decisions or guidance on what the minimum bid should be? I think it's important to secure that. Commissioner Kaylee.
What would be the reasoning in going lower than the assessed value?
To get rid of it.
It's to make it attractive to buyers. I mean, if, just what I think Commissioner Mojo said, that whatever number we make, if we were to not reach that minimum bid, we wouldn't sell it at that point. We'd have to come back to the board, let the board know we did not reach that number, and then have the board make a decision whether we're not going to look to sell it or lower that number. So it's just a matter of finding a number that we think is attractive to buyers and, and maximizing the amount that we get to be able to get to the enterprise fund as well. So it's just determining what's the best number to make. And that's the question of whether keeping it right at the assessed value or going lower in some way to make sure it's attractive to buyers. I think it's just up to the board what they see.
My concern would be if this is our second process and we're, we're noticing it twice, we have staff time and, and advertisement costs that are wrapped into it to continue to, I think it's just a burden. And this county-owned property committee has really talked about making sure that we liquidate this and get the land back into the hands of taxpayers.
Well, if we're going to feel comfortable with 150,000, I'll, I'll make a motion to put it up for a minimum bid of 150,000.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Evinger. Any other discussion on that? So the sale would be June? When's the sale?
I would be aiming for, yeah, probably late June.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item would be to request to fill the vacancy for a full-time corrections officer. Justin, welcome.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So yes, I'm here requesting to fill a full-time vacancy that came up last week. We have a full-time correction officer that submitted his resignation. He will be leaving us for Watertown, South Dakota Police Department. He's been with us for just a little over a year, so there will be some small cost savings involved with hiring a new, new officer. It is within our budget to replace him and also needed to meet our DOC staffing guidelines.
Do you have a roster available to hire people or do you have to go out each time?
We've been trying. So I think if, if the board remembers I was here maybe a couple of months ago requesting to fill some, some vacancies due to some military deployments, those vacancies are still open. So we are really struggling to find applicants.
So that would be saying you don't have a roster.
No, we do not.
Justin, are you concerned about the staffing pattern, having those vacancies?
It, it is concerning. It, it's been a struggle. I, we've posted some advertisements now on some other locations that we didn't typically advertise in the past. You know, in the past, we've attended some job fairs and stuff with the colleges. Currently, none of those are going right now. We have reached out to those colleges still just to, to get the word out that we are hiring because typically this is the time where we see applicants coming out of college, graduating. We're just not seeing those applicants currently.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead with the hiring of an officer, but since you haven't hired the other two yet or whatever, I don't know what good it'll do, but I'll make a motion that you can fill your, if you, if it's possible, fill your quota.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Evinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry, thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Good luck. Item five, our highway department items. Engineer Overbow.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got three items today to bring for approval. The first item being another request for the federal grant application from the city of Morehead. I believe the new one's called Raze. The last one that our county board sent a letter on support was called the Build Grant. They've kept the commitment from the county the same at $500,000. If they are successful in getting additional funds, then the letter that we signed a couple of weeks ago asking for an increased amount would go back to the 500. So keeping our fingers crossed that we're able to get some more funds for the project and then we can do more, more work within our own county with our own dollars. So I think it's a good deal. We've been, we've signed this letter a couple of times before and hopefully this is the third time's a charm.
Okay. I see attached, you have the letter for Secretary of Transportation.
Right.
Do you need that signed today?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Campbell's.
Would, would not have to be today. No.
Perfect. Want to make sure we can get that from him. Any questions from the board? Well, it certainly is a vital project. It's important. We've all advocated for it. Move to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve and then Commissioner Gross to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry, thank you. Next item would be the amendment to the engineering services for the North Broadway Bridge.
Right, we've been working on this with City of Fargo for several years now. I think we all know the recent closure of the bridge up there due to the tipping of the pier on the Minnesota side. We've worked with the engineering firm, SRF, and subconsultant Brown InterTech to continue to change the scope as to now the new conditions. There's some additional work that needs to be done. There's a public safety, public engagement piece that we need to kind of gauge, you know, the locals around there that use the road. What's their, what's their feeling if they were to close the road or to, you know, improve it? And so there's going to be a public engagement piece, some additional traffic analysis work that needs to be done, some more detailed bridge concept design work and some approach and road work, work as well. So the contract that we initially were working under was a little under budget. So the new one is about, estimated to be about $27,000. Half of that's for Clay County and half of that would be for the city of Fargo. Like I said, there's a little, we were a little under budget initially, so I think our shares of the additional half of 27,000 is probably like $8,000 or so. It's, we do have a consulting budget for this. Very important. We need to keep moving forward on it so we can, you know, let the locals up there know that, what our next steps are going to be.
Commissioner Kaylee.
I have gotten some calls from residents up around there. And yeah, everybody's really anxious to hear, what's the timeline on this thing? When, when can we expect? Do you have any sort of projected timeline?
I would guess we need to make an answer sometime by mid to late summer, summer's in there. I, I believe the public engagement piece will happen probably first, as well as some of the traffic analysis work will be done probably in June and July. So I would think we're going to try, maybe have an actual answer by the end of the year as far as, I kind of feel like on the North Dakota side, they maybe don't have as much residential people using it, but yet that's where the Minnesota locals are going. I think they're going down Broadway. So I, I feel like we're going to get an influx of people wanting to continue to make the crossing here from the, from our, on our side of the river. But I think we also need to hear from the businesses then on the North Dakota side that would be receiving this traffic. And I feel like hopefully we can capture their feelings as well. But right now, I guess I've, you know, we, we circled around different ways. Should we replace just the pier on our side and retrofit it would be the least cost? Or do we replace the whole thing? And it should come up a little bit because it's quite low. It floods rather quickly, but there's so much issues with the North Dakota roadway itself. It's sliding into the river. It's got, they got major issues over there. So the bridge itself is only like half the problem. So it's, it's kind of a complex situation.
Dave, can you clarify for me? The principal at SRF in his letter said that the remaining amount would be utilized of that 16,900.
Right.
Is that something different?
Yeah. I, I think essentially what he's saying is we don't, we didn't, I think the initial contract was for $160,000, so they're a little bit under that. So not, those funds aren't actually encumbered, you know, from the counties. It's just basically saying we didn't spend the amount. So they're kind of showing, trying to show it as the, the increase of $27,000 isn't maybe as big of a hit as it looks like it is. But it still will cost us those dollars.
Commissioner Gross.
It's there, who's going to make the decision whether to move ahead? If this project comes in to fix it, $10 million. Who's going to make that decision, North Dakota or Minnesota?
Well, it's a 50/50 decision between.
And I realize that.
Highway, you're on the highway committee. You're going to be in those meetings.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, I was just wondering who's, I mean, it's not SRF they're going to come up with those conditions.
I think the hard thing will be is if, if, let's say, City of Fargo decides they do not want to participate and Clay County does because we feel we need to, then it's, do we build the whole thing ourselves or do we just say it didn't work out? Kind of a, it's a very tough decision at some point down the road.
Yeah, because we decided to pay for everything, then is it our bridge? You know, it's just, that'd be some questions coming up with that one, I think.
How recent do you have traffic content on that bridge?
Within the last few years or so, yeah.
So that should be helpful in your discussion.
For sure. Yeah. I mean, there's definitely enough traffic to warrant a crossing there. It just, it's too bad that it was built so low and that there's so many slope stability issues on the roadway itself. City of Fargo has had some buyouts in that there's a cul-de-sac where I think the road could cross the bridge to itself and then kind of go up through that neighborhood. There's, there's some options to get away from that real, that real bad area, so.
Well, certainly we've been good partners with the North Dakota side on a lot of the crossings. And my hope is that both sides can realize that it's, it's partnership and, and really it benefits the metro as a whole. Hopefully those numbers come in favorably.
The other hard thing is there's another very expensive, very nice bridge not very far away. So it's, you know, one goes this way and one goes this way. So it's, I guess we'll have to see where the public engagement piece kind of takes us. And then with the, with the detailed concepts, we'll, we'll be able to dial in a little more on the costs, on exactly what the retrofit would cost with having a still a low bridge versus a brand new bridge. So a few things need to come together and maybe those things come together before the public engagement piece to say, you know, the bridge might cost $5 million. Do you feel that this is our best use of our dollars when you've got a bridge right there? So you need to ask these hard questions of everybody.
Okay. Colleen, I forgot, did we get a motion on this one yet? Okay. Word wishes. Move to approve the amendment. Motion to approve the amendment by Commissioner Kaylee.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you. Item, the next item would be the approval to purchase shoulder reclaiming equipment.
Yes, so we've been kind of trying to look for this very specific piece of equipment. We've been getting a lot of discussion and calls and complaints lately from whether it's residents or townships with regard to something commonly called curb and gutter or high shoulder. And this piece of equipment is exactly what we're looking for. There's, there's two, a couple of different ways you can handle that situation. You can either just put that material back down in the ditch with the mortar grader, which is not always the best option because you're putting, you know, ditches have a hard time draining in our county anyway because we're so flat. You start down to more material on there, it just causes more problems. The other area that we commonly used to do is you'd bring that material on the roadway. You'd cut, you know, you'd cut your shoulders. Well, now you're putting a lot of organics. There's, there's very little gravel there. A lot of people think the gravel goes out there. There is little bits of gravel out there, but it's predominantly, it's black dirt. So now you got all this black dirt on your roadway. You've contaminated your roadway. When it gets wet, it gets slimy and sticky and muddy and it's just not ideal. So what we would like to do is get this piece of equipment, it would fit on one of our smaller tractors. We could go up and down the roadway a couple of times and grind this material right where it is. And then you can gently lay that down right on the very top part of the in slope so it doesn't get blazed in big, big chunks and roll down the ditch, which now you can't mow your ditch either. This would be something that would, it's kind of like a landscapers, they use these things called Harley, Harley rakes, and they kind of, they grind up the material. And we've got anywhere from a couple of feet to three to four feet of a, of a shoulder that's higher than the roadway so the water can't drain off. So what this would allow us to do is to grind that stuff down and slide it right out on the in slope. And then from there, then we can build the roadway up. There is going to need to be more gravel put down. The county is committed to putting like quite a lot more dollars into our own graveling on our own county roads. And I think that's the biggest part of why the curb and gutters are in the first place is, in addition to that, you know, the trucks are getting bigger and heavier. I think everyone knows that. And I think they try to do what they think is the right thing is to slide over because they're bigger, but when they're sliding over on that shoulder, then they're also pushing that shoulder down as well. So it's.
Well, I appreciate that you're bringing this forward. I think that we can't address the issues on some of these roads, the soup bowls that have happened by just dumping new gravel in there because there's so much binder, it's just going to destroy the new gravel. I think there are areas where there's a lot of the material in the ditch, like you said.
Right.
And I think that that has happened because we're trying to get these edges down more. I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this forward. It probably is one of the most frequent concerns I hear from citizens.
Guaranteed.
Areas that are just retaining the water and can't drain. Do you have a cost on this item?
Yes, so the, on the back page, and maybe everyone didn't, on the back page shows the cost is 10,360. We do have a little additional internal service funds from a unit 102 that we bought. I did talk this over with county auditor, too, and she was supportive of it. This will also, if it is used on township roads, there would be a, a unit hourly cost to it, so we would recuperate some funding back from the township. So it wouldn't be, you know, it would be kind of a shared deal. When, when we bought the Walk and Roll Packers years ago, that was, one of the justifications there was those are used every day on our roads and the township roads. So, so there's some cost sharing to that equipment as well. And like Madam Chair says, this would, is a very needed piece of equipment. We do hear a lot of complaints and I'm, I'm hoping that this is something that can help that and.
Have we seen one of these things work yet?
I mean. Just online. We just, there's videos and different things. We met with the equipment salesman and so both our shop foreman and our maintenance foreman have been looking and, and at different things. And this is the best thing they found. And the other thing they were really worried about is like, okay, what happened like for wear parts? That's from the shop side, it's kind of nice if you get them involved because if things are wearing out, how do you, and I believe you can re-weld in those teeth so you can build them back up, which is kind of nice. They took, kind of took a look at long-term, too, how's it going to hold up?
Making motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. I think that you're going to find that you need more than one of these.
I was thinking the same thing, but, right. We'll see how it works.
Across that bridge. All right, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A same sign. Kerry's, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start tonight or today?
Tonight. Sure. Um, last week at our board meeting, I neglected to mention one of the things I attended, so I'll bring that up now. On Saturday, May 8th, I attended the Iftar party that was put on at the Dilworth Community Center hosted by community members with funding from West Central Initiative. The idea of this event was to teach our, to teach non-Muslim neighbors from our Islamic community, teaching their non-Muslim neighbors about Ramadan, breaking of the fast, prayers and other Islamic religious practices to build understanding, deepen relationships and talk about shared values. So there were assorted mayors, council members and commissioners from the area that attended that. And it was a wonderful evening with lots of talking and sharing and I hope we have more similar events in the future as well. On Wednesday, the 12th, I attended the Cast Clay Food Partners meeting. Dana from School Food Services, um, the director in West Fargo, shared about their food recovery program. They've been saving leftover, um, safe food products from their school lunch program and then repackaging those to send them out as meals for families in need. Um, so a family would just pick up a box. And then they also talked about some of their summer plans as well, um, where they would give a week's worth of food per child to a family. So this would equate to a whole loaf of bread for toast or a whole box of cereal. Um, and then they can still charge that out as individual meals as long as it met the criteria. I liked the idea of a whole week at a time because it saved them a lot of staff time. It also was very convenient for the families not to come every day to pick something up. So that was great to hear about that. Genesis Peer from the Fargo Cast Public Health, um, she's a dietetic intern with them, presented on incorporating food systems language into planning documents. She had a very interesting and thorough presentation and that is available online if anybody wanted to look at sort of the history of how food language has been incorporated into our planning documents over the last few years. If you search for Cast Clay Food Partners and find the agendas, it's in the supplemental materials there. Noel Harden also presented an overview of the regulations on selling food in our region. And there was a really good discussion on this being on a border. You know, the North Dakota regulations and the Minnesota regulations vary widely. Um, and so that becomes hard for a lot of our producers and vendors to keep track of what they can do on either side of the river. So there's constant work being done to provide resources, um, for our, our vendors and producers on what they can do, what's allowed. But this is an ever-changing environment and something that I think we'll keep discussing That same day, I also attended the Morehead Business Association meeting. There was a presentation from Minnesota Rural Step, from Teresa Haysman. And at that meeting, because it was a business association meeting, she talked a lot about, um, some of the resources that they provide for businesses, um, including, um, on-the-job training for current employees. So I believe they called that incumbent, um, training. And the idea there is to, um, build skills in your current workforce for the betterment of the whole region. They also have various programs to help people get set up with jobs. Um, and all of their services are provided at no charge. So if you are a job seeker, I would definitely check out, um, rmcep.com and see, um, what resources might benefit you that they are offering. They also will have a job fair coming up soon. Maybe that's something we want to have our correctional facility participate in. On Saturday, May 15th, our Early Childhood Initiative hosted their 7th Annual Kids Fest Event at MB Johnson Park. Hundreds of people attended. It was an absolutely beautiful day. Lots of families got out to explore that park and, um, in the process, learned about mental health agencies and services available for their children in our area, dental care services, safety, um, child development services. And they just connected with a variety of agencies serving young families in our area, all while enjoying active outdoor play with their families. Thank you to all of the volunteers who helped make that happen. That was a really fun event for our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinghaus.
Uh, last Wednesday, the 12th, I went to the, I went to Thief River Falls, uh, first in-person meeting with the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Board. We also had the, uh, the RAC Regional Advisory Committee meeting at the same time. Covered a lot of information. A lot of grant funding is in the pipeline to try and, uh, pay for some of the, um, programs and particularly our system administrator, Brian Zastepil, who's also the, uh, system administrator for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. He does this role for the emergency communication group, uh, part-time. And we're looking to fund his salary. Uh, reviewed the 2022 through 2024, uh, emergency communication, uh, groups, IPP, their Integrated Preparedness Plan, which is coming along well and would be really tedious to review. Uh, we also, um, looked at the results of the three strategic planning sessions that we held. And we have a report put together which is going to assist in working statewide with other, other groups to come up with, uh, strategic planning statewide. Uh, the PSAP committee report was, was, uh, interesting in light of what we've heard today. Very few of the PSAPS in our region are fully staffed. Retention is an issue. Keeping people on board is an issue, uh, because of pressure, also because of, uh, in our region, there's a lot of competition on salaries. There is a, uh, some statewide legislation talking about certifying, uh, dispatch operators. It's a great thing in theory, but, uh, smaller PSAPS in rural areas get very concerned because people aren't going to get certified and moved to a smaller rural area. But if you certify your, your people, uh, in these small PSAPS, they may start looking to move up into bigger, more competitive PSAPS. So that's, that's something we have to look at. Uh, another issue that came up is the 911 fee diversion. At this point, and I have got to look into what the legislation is, they weren't very clear about it. Uh, and it, it doesn't look like anything's going to happen this session. But, uh, at this point, just about all the 911 fees, uh, that you pay for, for those services have gone into creating armor and setting up, uh, the backbone system we've got in Minnesota. There is an amount that's, that is sent out to the PSAPS for operational funds. Uh, we receive those funds. Morehead receives those funds and they go towards our cost with, uh, the dispatch center. That's currently under discussion as to whether that will continue. So that's something I'll get, uh, more information on and provide in the future. Um, on Friday, the 14th, um, I, uh, virtually attended the Partnership for Health Community Commissioner Gross is the chairman of that board and we covered a lot of, uh, information. I reviewed the COVID, COVID-19 impact on finances. The money that came in from the federal and was a real lifesaver on this. Was a discussion about the need for separate auditing by the state auditor because we're joint power authority. There were elections for the vice chair, executive secretary and the alternate to the, uh, Shack, the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee. Uh, we had a discussion as to the ability to use alternates in at least that position. I think the consensus was that, uh, they couldn't do that. Commissioner Gross was gracious enough to take the alternate position on the Shack Committee, uh, but he's also the chair, so he's wearing a lot of hats. Uh, there will be a scheduled vote at the next meeting to discuss adding an additional citizen's position. The comment was made that given the length of the term, there will be counties within the group, it may be as long as 12 years before they have representation. So another position, uh, they should be considered. They also formally voted in to make Kathy McKay and Jody lean co-directors of the partnership. Uh, later that day, I had a discussion with Paul Schnell, Commissioner Corrections, involving juvenile legislation that's been under consideration. And yesterday I met with, uh, or we met Steve Larson, Commissioner Campbell, Brian Melton, James O'Donnell and Josh Swenson, met to discuss, again, issues regarding the legislation and its impact on juvenile detention. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Commissioner Gross, your reports.
Last Tuesday, after our commission meeting, the Highway Tracking Committee met. Several items that we talked about there have already been, uh, were on the agenda item, but a couple more things. We talked about the Georgetown levy as far as completing that, the, uh, the FM diversion is going to probably complete that thing, raising Highway 75 and get that thing to be certified. Uh, we discussed culvert extensions. People are requesting culvert extensions, you know, who pays for those culverts and stuff and who's going to put that driveway into? I mean, people probably put a personal driveway in there now to find out, it's like it wider, you know? So now who's going to pay for making that, uh, wider? We discussed, uh, a road tour that we're all going to be invited to, uh, driving around the county as far as, uh, seeing some of the projects the Highway Department is working on. Another thing was update on the, all the construction, uh, we're looking at doing three bridges, the construction and haulies going on in town that's going on right now. There's going to be a couple of other projects on County State Highway Number Two. So a lot of work being done there. Another thing that we talked about was the, um, staff requirements. They're looking at possibly three retirements coming up in the Highway Department that we're about to look as far as replacing. Later that day, we talked about, um, selling the Riverton Township, uh, property, which we discussed at, at the meeting. And there's also some more property up there in the, in the Felton area. Of course, that could be held up by a, a butterfly, so we won't go into that any further. Um, but, uh, I think that, um, property we'll have to look at trying to sell too. Uh, Wednesday, Wild Rise Watership Board, just mostly routine stuff, uh, going on there. A lot of work being done on ditch cleaning, uh, up there in that area. Thursday, beyond the Yellow Ribbon, um, Good Cannon was there to give a pretty good report on what's going on in the, in the veteran service, as veteran service officers. There's going to be, um, Historical Society is going to be putting on a main, May 19 on, on the Veterans Walk, uh, some function that's going on there. Let's see what else we discussed there. There's also going to be a, a veterans picnic, uh, I think at Bonanzaville, May 27th. Friday with Partnership for Health and that pretty well has been recovered, recovered by Commissioner Ebbinghaus as far as what was, what happened there. Uh, Monday, uh, last night I went to Keene Township, uh, to visit with them, uh, just to see what, uh, their needs and concerns are. Uh, they've got a lot of problems with beavers up there. They're really, uh, clogging up the ditches and stuff, so, uh, they're, you know, last night there, several people came in there with, uh, beavers. They got a $50, um, reward for beaver, trapping beavers and stuff, so, uh, so, I don't know, sort of incentive, I think, to, we also almost thought there was an incentive to raise beavers up there and bring them in, but at that price, but that's almost as good as chickens or anything like that, so. I don't know if we're going to go into that project, you know, county project or not, but, um, and then this morning we had the PIC committee, uh, which has already been discussed. Those are my meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Uh, last week I also attended the county-owned property meeting. I think good information on this county's direct, this board's directive to try to liquidate as much of those properties as possible. We are bound by some regulations on that and we're just going to continue to look at it. We did have some discussion that some of those, uh, properties are maintenance issues for us, our Highway Department between mowing. And there is one property that had a extra approach that we'll make sure and take out just to, um, prevent people going in there. I attended the Cast Clay Food Partners meeting, a good update from Commissioner Kaylee and met with several, uh, community members based on, uh, different concerns. I also attended the PIC committee as referenced earlier in Commissioner Campbell's place for that. He will report next week when he's back, but Steve, do you have your report?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, last Tuesday, I attended, uh, the Highway Tracking that's been addressed by Commissioner Gross. I have nothing more to add there. Uh, also that morning I attended the, uh, the county owned lands that, uh, we've addressed by Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Mojo. On that, the 12th, we had county management, we heard a vaccine update from, uh, from Kathy, uh, campus projects, uh, budget 2022. Again, next week we'll be here with tentative schedule, uh, for what that looks like in planning. A lot of work ahead of us here coming up and over the next six months. Management retreat, uh, will be next Tuesday. Uh, and we talked about the survey that was sent, uh, to all of our participants and in, and yesterday was the deadline of turning that information in, uh, that we're hoping to utilize as part of, uh, part of our breakout sessions during that retreat. Um, our management retreat, our management meetings, I have been meeting almost, uh, a month, weekly, uh, every Wednesday, uh, for the last 15 months. Uh, and we've made the determination that we're going to try to move, uh, to two meetings per month, uh, and, uh, have one, one in-person, uh, and then one, uh, online. I think that there's enough information, prior to COVID, we met about, about once per month, uh, but I think with all the things that are still happening on our campus, that it would be beneficial to keep everybody up to date, uh, so they can pass it on to their departments. On the 12th, I participated in the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board Meeting. Uh, we had updates on the Cast County Alerts operating policy. Uh, we heard a report from Steve Dirksen from Fargo Fire on the possible, uh, building. There, I think this board has heard they're significantly, uh, cramped in the space that they're in and they're looking for alternatives. Uh, and also they're having staffing challenges. Staffing need is, is great. I think, uh, last week they, they reported on the, the fire that happened on 32nd Avenue. Uh, it's an example of the challenges, uh, that they had with the number of councils, employees that they had on. Previously, they approved, uh, two additional hires, uh, for, for dispatchers that will be hired July 1st. Uh, and the board approved hiring four additional dispatchers, uh, in 2022. Our, our users shouldn't see an impact as they're going to be utilizing cash carryover, cash reserve to cover those positions. On the 13th, uh, did a great deal of board preparation with Colleen on the morning and morning. That afternoon, I met with, uh, representatives from A2S and Dr. Bob Zimmerman on our upcoming MCC JPA meeting. I participated in a webinar, uh, put on by NACO, uh, in regards to the American Rescue Plan. Um, and that afternoon we were able to submit, uh, for our, our funds, uh, for the first half. And we're hoping that we should receive those dollars, uh, sometime this week. this week. Uh, Thursday, Friday and Monday, I spent a great deal of time working with Kathy on the CDC and MDH, uh, requirements along with Governor Walz's executive order, uh, and, appreciate again the PIC's ability to meet so quickly this morning today, so we can get this on the agenda. Um, participated yesterday, participated in the legislative discussion, uh, that Commissioner Evinger spoke about in this morning's PIC meeting. Just would make a, a real quick note, again, the, the University of, of Minnesota Extension Office has been closed, uh, for much of the last year. They will have an administrative assistant, uh, starting yesterday, and the Family Service Center from eight to four-thirty, uh, with the other extension staff still available through their till of work at, um, agreements, and that'll probably happen through the summer. And then just to note that, uh, on our, on our, um, calendar for our commissioners tomorrow, uh, the fire and EMT press conference will be held at the Dilworth City Hall at two P.M. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Just a question on the conference tomorrow. Did you see that, is that a public, I mean, if there's more than two commissioners there, is that okay or?
Yes, we, uh, we did post it and so.
Oh, it is posted, okay. Very good. I plan on attending that.
Thank you. Anything else? Brian, did you have anything? Colleen? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.